The meeting is called to order for the regular city council meeting, January fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Madam Clerk, the pledge please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
All right. Councilman Baudier.
Present.
Councilman Benton.
Present.
Councilman Hewitt.
Present.
Councilman Johnston.
Present.
Councilman Wheeler.
Present.
Mayor Masselli.
Here.
Police Chief Walker.
Here.
Fire Chief Saint Seere.
Present.
And City Attorney Kressel.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we begin the meeting, I'd like a moment to welcome everyone for your attendance tonight and congratulate our returning council members and our new council members. So congratulations. And I'd also like to welcome to Walker, our police chief. I'd also like to take this opportunity for our department heads to introduce themselves, if you don't mind coming up.
Good evening, my name is Collins. I'm the fire chief of the city of Harrah.
Good evening, Jeff Charley. I'm the regular board manager and fire plan manager.
No, mic's not on.
Mayor, press the button.
Edwin Larasella, I'm the maintenance director for the city.
I'm Mary Helen Cosco, the clerk of court.
Robert Hines, Director of Finance.
Stu Foley, Harrahian Recreation Department Director.
Thank you, everyone. I was informed that former Jefferson Parish Council member Anne Marie Vandeweghe, who was in attendance at the inauguration, was overlooked. I want to send my apologies and recognize her and thank her for her attendance at the inauguration on the eleventh. I was also asked to share my inaugural remarks that I gave on Sunday. So if you bear with me, I'll share them with you. I hope it doesn't take up too much time. Today, I come before you humbled and enthusiastic. Humbled that the people of Harrahian have chosen me to be its servant leader for the next four years. This trust will serve as a daily reminder that you, the people of Harrahian, are the reason we hold these positions. As we move forward, it must always be clear what motivates us is you. Being mayor is an incredible honor and an awesome responsibility for this daughter of an immigrant with a third grade education and his modest wife, and I accept. In the history of Jefferson Parish, there's a prominent place for this gem along the Mississippi River. With its beautiful trees, green spaces, and charming neighborhoods, Harrahian represents a slice of Americana that most people can only dream of. We are blessed to have it. But those idyllic scenes would be meaningless without the people who give it life. The people of Harrahian represent love of family, strong values, and serve as jealous guardians of its rich culture and way of life. This little gem, where people feel safe and never want to leave, holds a unique place in the history of Jefferson Parish. Now we have an opportunity to embrace that history and direct our future in a way that lets Louisiana know that Harrahian is so much more than just a small bedroom community. As I begin my time working for you, there are three things I want to do together with you. First, we will let everyone know that Harrahian is open for business the right way. We will let those who wish to open businesses in the city know that we have rules, regulations, codes, and standards, and laws that are designed to protect our citizens and neighborhoods while allowing businesses to coexist and prosper in our city. We will make clear that in Harrahian, the playing field is level and just for everyone. Second, my desire is to begin an ongoing dialogue with proven and seasoned leaders in our region and show how we can work together and make our cities even stronger. We will create relationships and partnerships with surrounding communities that will allow us to benefit from their existing contracts and expertise. Harrahian cannot be an island all unto itself if we intend to provide the services that Harrahian citizens deserve. Third, we will have a paradigm shift. I will always be the first person to stand in defense of our small-town appeal, but I will also be at the forefront of a search for new ideas and more progressive ways to operate the city. I believe you can walk the streets and feel like you're living in a quaint, small town, but when you walk into City Hall, you must feel that it operates with the efficiency of any Fortune 500 corporation. This means that operations will be streamlined, budgets will be maintained, waste will be eliminated, and customer service will be outstanding. My philosophy is simple. We will be accountable to our shareholders, you, the citizens of Harrahian. The most dangerous thing about history is that often, in spite of the lessons, in spite, sorry, about history is that it is often repeated in spite of the lessons that we should learn from it. We should always cherish the memories of the good old days, but never let it stymie our growth and progress. When I think of Harrahian, I think about our most cherished assets in life: family, friends, neighbors, and our community. This will be my sole motivation to provide Harrahian the best quality of life and safest community that is possible. My vision is that Harrahian be a true model in the region and even the state, and that we are proud to call it home. Thank you, God bless you, and let's get to work. (applause). I also wanted to make mention, if you haven't noticed, we've kind of freshened up the city council chambers. We're in the process. I'd like to thank our team headed by Edwin Larasella and our maintenance crew for all their hard work. You're probably still smelling the fumes. So they've really kind of spruced up everything really nice. I'd also like to give you an update of what we've been doing for the first couple of weeks. I've commented, I've campaigned on how important transparency is and how key it is in government. We are currently reviewing all contracts, all professional services, retainers, and vendors. I'm looking forward to putting them online. I'd also like to tell you financially, we are in the process of getting an in-service for InCode, which is our financial software. Training is scheduled in February so that we can maximize its capabilities and make us more efficient here in the city. This will help us meet our financial goals of transparency and working toward to put a budget online also. We have a few special presentations that we'd like to talk about. March twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, we'd like to encourage everyone to support our fire renewal of five mills. And if it passes, that will enable us to maintain the service that we are currently providing its citizens. And I'm going to ask Chief Saint Seere if he would mind addressing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens of Harrahian. Appreciate y'all allowing me to speak tonight regarding the millage on March twenty-eighth. We'd like the support of this mayor and this council and this police chief and all citizens of Harrahian in order to have this millage renewed once again. Twenty years ago, we put this millage up for the first time at a time when millages just would not pass in the city of Harrahian. We put several up that had failed, other departments had put several up that failed, and it just seemed like the citizens didn't trust us. We got out and we started knocking doors and we started talking to people. And we started talking to the civic groups, and we had the civic groups come to the fire station. And I met with them over and over and over, and I showed, put everything out on the table. And what we said we would do if we were entrusted with the money was that we would buy new equipment, we would hire new employees, and that we would gain a better rate on your insurance. Having a better rate in insurance would save you money from your insurance policy, which would allow you to give it to us to provide a better service. You actually paid us the money that you were given to the insurance company and received a great benefit from it. We did everything that we said we would do twenty years ago, and I'm here to tell you we're going to continue to do everything that we can to continue to live up to that. Although things have gotten a little tight in the city over the last few years, you know, a dollar doesn't go as far as it used to, and the millage hasn't grown as much as we'd like it to. However, we still are able to provide the services that we were able to provide to you then and will continue. We're in the process of meeting people. We're going to get out and knock doors again to let the homeowners know exactly what it is that we can do for you and why it is that we need these funds. We're going to have an open house on March fourteenth at the fire station. We're going to do this from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. We'd invite the public to come out and see the equipment, see the station, and talk to the firemen that are there and get to know them and let us tell you why we need this millage. It's imperative that this millage pass. Without the renewal, we would be devastated. The city does not have the funds and the coffers that I know of that can make up the difference of $385,000. One mill is equal to $77,000, and that is over a third of our budget. There's no way that we could sustain the same level of service. I don't want to threaten, you know, we don't want to try scare tactics, but it is absolutely imperative. Compared to other departments in the area, I looked at, I have looked at departments on the east bank of Jefferson Parish, on the west bank of Jefferson Parish, St. Tammany Fire District Number One, St. Menard Parish, Plackerman's Parish, and several St. Charles Parish departments. And on an average, those departments collect 20.79 mills per department. We're asking you to renew five. It's not all that we need. We plan to work with this mayor and this council, and Police Chief has offered his assistance to work with us in the future to get where we need to be. And I look forward to that challenge, and we'll take it head-on, and hopefully, with the grace of God and some hard work, we'll get where we need to be. Can talk a little bit about the millage. Now would be the time, if you have a recording device at your home, to turn on the recorder, because what I'm about to say may be a little boring. You may want to play it back a few times to kind of get the grasp of what I'm trying to say. One mill is equal to one one-thousandth of a dollar. Okay? For every $1,000 in assessed valuation, you would pay $1, is basically the gist of that. The assessed valuation would be the percentage of fair market value of your home. That's the valuation. Okay? So on a residential, ten percent times fair market value would be the value of your home. So it would actually be point one zero times, on a $100,000 home, if you had a $100,000 home, if you took point one zero times 100,000, would equal 10,000. That would be your assessed value. One mill would be point one zero one times 10,000, which would equal $10 of property tax. Five mills, which is what we're asking, would be point zero five times 10,000, would be $50 in tax that you would pay. Commercial property is a little bit different. It is ten percent of the fair market value on the land. However, it does change to fifteen percent fair market value on improvements, which would be the structure, and fifteen percent on movables, inventory, equipment, et cetera. So the assessed valuation, if you, business or commercial property, if you had assessed valuation of $50,000 on the land and $50,000 on the building and improvements and $50,000 on movables, it would be ten percent times 50,000 for the land, it would be fifteen percent times 50,000 for improvements, which is $7,500, and fifteen percent times 50,000 for the movables and other equipment, et cetera, which would be 20,000. Five mills would then cost that business $100. So if you have any questions about that, I'll be happy to come and address them with you. If there are any civic groups that would like me to come and speak or any member of my department to come and speak, we'll be happy to come and address you and answer those questions. If there are any citizens that have questions about how this will affect you monetarily, I'd be happy to field your questions at 504-737-9957. We appreciate your support, and I'm sure we'll come back next month to remind you that it's coming. The date is March twenty-eighth, and we really would appreciate your continued support. And it is a renewal. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It will not be a big change in tax at all. No change. There hasn't been a reassessment this year that I know of, no. Wasn't a reassessment this year, there would be no change. And once again, we appreciate your support.
Thank you for that detailed report. I love it.
And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to field them now. And I look forward to meeting with each one of you individually and getting y'all to jump on board and help us. Thank you.
Thank you. We might have to have Robert Hines explain the math behind it all, you know.
We got him.
There you go.
We have all the numbers for him.
Thank you. I'd also like to recognize tonight a native Harrahian resident and all-American cheerleader, Harrison Trapegnier. He is a senior at Brother Martin and is one of 500 high school cheerleaders from across the country who was chosen by Universal Cheerleaders Association to perform in London's New Year's Day Parade. And I wanted to tell, congratulations officially.[1008.01][1008.01](applause). Is he here? Is he here today? Is he here?
No, he didn't make it.
Oh, okay. At present, would anyone like to address the council? And when you come up, please come to the podium and state your name.
Good evening, council, mayor, and those in attendance and those in view in the audience. My name is Michael O'Brien. I first would like to apologize for skipping out a little bit early. I've been under the weather the last few days, and I don't want to spread my germs to you good people of Harrahian. But I would like to formally congratulate all you, the council, Ms. Mayor. I wish the city of Harrahian yourselves good luck and God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, thank you. My name's Kirk Talbot. I'm a state representative from this area, and I want to congratulate the mayor and the new members of the council and the returning members of the council. And I just wanted to reach out to each and every one of you if there's anything I can do or my office can do. Tia Russell, many of you probably know, is my legislative assistant. Our number there is 736-7299. And, you know, I look forward to working with y'all, and I think we need to get together on maybe some, you know, capital outlay, you know, projects, budget requests we can do. If the city has any money it'd like to loan the state, we could use it.[1107.24][1107.24](laughter). I filled up the other day at $1.67 a tank, which is great, but it's putting the state in a little bit of a pinch. But we're going to get through it, and, you know, there's some things that we can do to help us get through there, and maybe we'll come out leaner and better. Again, and I apologize for not being able to make it last weekend, and if anybody has any questions or anything, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
But thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Paul Johnson. I'm your councilman from Jefferson Parish, and I want to come welcome the mayor and the new council and the old council coming back. Looking forward to working with y'all in the next year. I'm here for y'all. Anything you need, just give me a call. I do live in Harrahian, as everybody knows, so I will be around. I just want to mention that the new councilman here, Mr. Johnston, when I sat here twenty years ago, I was 230 pounds.[1165.11][1165.11](laughter).
Morning.
So be careful what you wish for, and you eat a lot of late meals, so be careful. But thank y'all.
Thanks. Thank you.
Dale Semino, 140 McQ. Mayor, the residents of McQ Street, we recently organized a Neighborhood Watch program with the help of the Harrahian Police Department, and has been interested in what we have done. So I wanted to briefly, if I could, just share from a citizen's perspective why we started a Neighborhood Watch program, how we did it, and what it has done for us. First, to make sure what I'm seeing here is correct and accurate, I've already reviewed my talking points with Chief Walker and Lieutenant Frank Graff, who's the Harrahian Police Department Coordinator for the Neighborhood Watch program. Why did we start a Neighborhood Watch program on McQ Street? Last year, early last year, there was some incidents in adjoining neighborhoods that caused us concern, and most of these incidents have been resolved. But this is the reason why my neighbors and I talked and decided to contact the Harrahian Police Department to inquire if a Neighborhood Watch program was available. We learned, yes, indeed, it was, and it's available through the Harrahian Police Department to the citizens of Harrahian. How did we do it? Lieutenant Frank Graff, again, who's the Harrahian Police Department Neighborhood Watch Coordinator, helped and worked with us. We had three block meetings with Lieutenant Graff to organize a Neighborhood Watch Association. We learned about crime prevention, home security, personal security, automobile security, and much more. We have received from Lieutenant Graff several handouts, and we now have a new Neighborhood Watch signs on both entrances of McQ Street, and they're clearly viewed by anyone coming into our neighborhood. Now, these signs, what they do is they tell any person with criminal intent to do your business elsewhere, because if you stay and do your business in our neighborhood, then you will quickly be doing business with the Harrahian Police Department. We watch out for each other, and we work closely with the Harrahian Police Department. A Neighborhood Watch program extends the eyes and the ears of the Harrahian Police Department. We have learned how to be observant, and we will call the police department when we suspect suspicious activity in our neighborhood. And the Harrahian Police Department would rather get a call and have something turn out to be nothing rather than not get a call and have a crime incident occur and someone say, "I wish the police would have been called out on this." What a Neighborhood Watch program is doing for us? It provides for a safer neighborhood and community, and also, we have gotten to know our neighbors better. We have created for ourselves a neighborhood phone roster. We have developed the contact protocol where we can easily communicate with each other when necessary, and we will also have, continue to have periodic meetings with Lieutenant Frank Graff. Chief Walker, we want to thank you for making the Neighborhood Watch program available to the citizens of Harrahian. We thank the Harrahian Police Department for providing our Neighborhood Watch signs. Mayor, we thank the city maintenance department for installing these signs on our street, and we thank Lieutenant Frank Graff for working with us to start a Neighborhood Watch program on McQ Street. In closing, I ask my fellow citizens to talk with your neighbors and also consider starting a Neighborhood Watch program in your street. The Harrahian Police Department and Lieutenant Frank Graff welcomes inquiries, and they will work with the citizens to organize Neighborhood Watch programs in their streets. Having more Neighborhood Watch programs in our city will result in our safe city being an even safer place to live. Next month, Lieutenant Graff will be here to share additional information about the Neighborhood Watch program available through the Harrahian Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dale.
We will now close, address to the council.
Approval of minutes. Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on December eighteenth, 2014.
Do, we have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes by Councilman Baudier, seconded by Councilman Hewitt, to dispense with the reading. All in favor?
Yays.
Yays? How many yays? All opposed, nays. The motion passes. Five yays, no nays.
Approval of the minutes of the council meeting on December eighteenth, 2014.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Baudier, seconded by Councilman Hewitt, to approve the minutes. Do I have, I have a motion to approve the minutes for the December meeting? All in favor, yays.
Yays.
Any nays? No nays. Five yays, no nays. We have approved that motion.
Reading of the minutes of the special meeting on December twenty-second, 2014.
Do we have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
Well, I can always count on you. Councilman Baudier.
Motion.
Seconded by Councilman Hewitt. I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes. All in favor, yays.
Yays.
Any nays? All in favor, five yays, no nays. Motion passes.
Approval of the minutes of the special meeting on December twenty-second, 2014.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Councilman Baudier.
I'll take it.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Motion.
Councilman Hewitt. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting on December twenty-second. All in favor?
Yays.
Any nays? All, so the motion passes. Five yays, no nays.
Communications. Reading of the minutes of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals on December seventeenth, 2014.
Do we have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes? Councilman Baudier.
Motion.
Seconded by?
Motion.
Councilman Hewitt. I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes. All in favor, yays.
Yays.
All opposed, nays. We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
Approval of the minutes of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals on December seventeenth, 2014.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Somebody else?
Motion.
Oh, sorry.[1632.33][1632.33](laughter).
Spreading it. Is that Wheeler? Spreading the wealth.
Let him spread it down there.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Okay. A motion by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by?
Motion.
Oh, good. Councilman Benton. I got out of my rhythm there. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Adjustments of Appeals for December seventeenth, 2014. All in favor, yays.
Yays.
All opposed, nays. We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
The Planning and Zoning Board did not meet in December. In resolutions, there are no resolutions, ordinances for approval. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Hewitt and seconded by Councilman?
I'd like to second this one.
I'll second.
An ordinance providing for the transfer of capital projects funds to the city's general fund to be utilized for operating expenditures of the city. Now therefore be it ordained by the mayor and the council and the city council of the city of Harrahian that the transfer out of capital projects funds, $372,125, transfer in to the general fund, $372,125. The severability and repeal clause as referenced in ordinance number 1566 is incorporated into this ordinance. This ordinance, having been submitted to a vote, the vote thereon was as follows.
Do we have a motion to open public hearing?
Motion. Do we have a second?
Hewitt.
Oh, sorry. Motion by Councilman Hewitt, seconded by Councilman Bennett, to open to public hearing. All in favor?
Yays.
All opposed, nays. We have five yays, no nays. Would anyone like to comment on the ordinance? Anyone from the public?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by?
Wheeler.
What? Councilman Benton, to close the public hearing. All in favor, yays.
Yays.
All opposed, nays. We have five yays, zero nays. Ordinance, I'm sorry, motion passes. Wait, what?
Close public hearing.
That's right.
Oh, sorry.
That's right.
Motion to close public hearing. I'm like... I'm like going ahead of myself. I'm so sorry.
She's speeding up.
That's right. Does the council have any discussion of this ordinance?
No discussion.
Baudier, Benton, Hewitt?
I just wanted to ask our city attorney, Dave Corcell, just to stand up or go to the microphone, just to explain what the legislative auditor put in writing and guided us what to do back on December nineteenth, and I think he shared that email with all of us, just so everyone understands why we did this at the special meeting in December and why it's on the agenda for tonight.
All right, and if you want, I'll read the email, just because it's not very long, so everybody will understand it. Mr. Corcell advised that you discuss the following suggestions with the city attorney and city management. This was actually sent to the city finance director at the time. I suggest that you enact two ordinances, one for the budget amendment and one for the uncommitment of the funds. The reason for this is because most cities have a restriction to only have one topic on any ordinance. Consider amending the budget with the language that the transfer will occur only contingent on the uncommitment of the capital projects funds. Then introduce and enact the uncommitment ordinance. Then if the uncommitment ordinance does not pass, the city can pass another budget amendment without the transfer. Again, I cannot give you legal advice, but this seems like a reasonable plan that could be signed off on by the attorney. I did review this, and while I didn't completely agree with it, I do agree that this is probably the safest and best way to do it. So I did agree with their recommendation. And in December, the prior council, the prior administration, did vote on an amended budget. But that amended budget was made contingent or conditioned upon this budget, I mean, this ordinance, passing this evening. And we're doing it based upon what the legislative auditor do, and I'll answer any questions, but this is the reason we're doing it. But if we don't pass it tonight, then the ordinance that was voted on in December will fail. Will not be in effect.
Thank you. Councilman Johnston?
No disrespect to the past mayor and council, but as far as this goes, I was not involved with this budget at all. Secondly, I'm not a big fan of taking money from capital funds and pushing it over to the operating fund, so I'll be voting against this.
Councilman Wheeler? We can take a vote. All in favor, yays?
Yays.
All opposed?
No.
We have four yays, one nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance passes. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
All right.
Thank you.
Ordinance for introduction, number one, the following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Johnston, an ordinance to enact budget procedures. Ordinance number two for introduction, the following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Johnston, an ordinance to require online posting of city budget. Ordinance number three for introduction, the following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Johnston, an ordinance to require online posting of contracts. Old business? We don't have any old business. New business?
We had planned to do nominations of our, for our legal team, our appointments. I am planning on proceeding with that tonight. After consulting with Dave Corcell, our city attorney, he informed me that we should proceed, and I feel very confident in our, in my nominations for the city of Harahan. I ask city, I ask the council to reappoint first Nicole Lee, city clerk, tax collector. All in favor?
Yays.
Any nays? Five yays, zero nays. Congratulations, Nicole Lee. I'd like to ask, yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Corcell to swear in Nicole Lee as city tax collector, as city clerk and tax collector.
I, Nicole Lee.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States?
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state?
Of this state.
And the laws of the city of Harahan?
And the laws of the city of Harahan.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge?
And impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties?
And perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me?
Incumbent upon me.
As city clerk and tax collector for the city of Harahan?
As city clerk and tax collector for the city of Harahan.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding?
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
I would now like to ask the council to appoint Steve London as city attorney. All in favor? Can we have discussion, mayor?
We have to do a motion?
We're not, we're just going to proceed with the vote. All opposed?
Nay.
We have four yays, one nay. Appointment is approved. I ask the city council to appoint Joanne Mantas as magistrate for mayor's court. All in favor?
Yays.
Nay.
One nay. We have four yays, one nay. Appointment is approved. I ask the city council to appoint Dave Corcell as city prosecutor for mayor's court. All in favor, yays?
Yays.
Nay.
All opposed? One nay. Four yays, one nay. Appointment is approved. I ask the city council to nominate a mayor pro tem for the term of two thousand and fifteen. Do we have a motion to appoint?
It's been approved.
Councilman Baudier? Councilman Baudier as mayor pro tem, two thousand and fifteen.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Hewitt, seconded by?
I'll second.
Johnston. All in favor?
Yays.
All opposed, nays? Motion, appointment passes. Five yays, zero nays. And now, I would like to congratulate everyone who's been appointed. I am privileged to be working with this group. I look forward to it. I think this is a wonderful day for Harahan. We should all be encouraged, and I'd like to offer everybody. Would anyone like to address the council? We will now close, address the council.
Then we have secretary's report.
I kept, keep looking for the clock.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we moved it all over here. The secretary's.
See, you sat here.
That's right. The secretary's report will be ready in February. I ask a little bit of patience, just because we're getting up to speed on all the software within code, et cetera, and we don't want to give you half answers on the secretary's report.
And reports.
Chief Walker, would you please give a report?
Good evening. Police report for December two thousand and fourteen is as follows. Number calls for service for the month were six hundred and eighteen. Non-accidents reported. Hundred and one citations issued for a hundred and thirty charges. Two funeral escorts. Eleven patrol requests. We had thirty-one arrests for a number of sixty-four charges. We had two traffic, fifteen felony, twenty-two misdemeanor, and twenty-five city. We had one residence burglary, three larceny thefts, and four assaults. Again, I want to ask the public to please continue locking their vehicles, just hit the little button, press the button, lock the cars, it'd be very appreciative. Also, remember, school's back in session. Watch the school zones. And we have a little issue on Imperial Woods in the morning, with schools taking in, people leaving Imperial Woods. When you get to Jefferson Highway, you have to take a right turn. Please follow that rule. I also want to say we had a very quiet Christmas and New Year in Harahan. I'm sure everybody's happy about that. I am, and the department is also. And also, I'm in support of the renewal for the Harahan Fire Department. I know it's needed, and it's a continuation of a tax that's been on the rolls. And as Mr. Semino mentioned earlier about Neighborhood Watches, feel free to call our station, seven three seven, nine seven six three, and leave a message to Lieutenant Graff, and he'll get in touch with you about starting a Neighborhood Watch in your area. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Chief Sancier, would you like to give us a report?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Baudier?
Just wanted to say, everyone, I'm looking forward to a great four years, working with a new mayor, a new council. Again, I keep my pledges. I promise I will be open-minded and try to work as hard and diligently as I possibly can. And the only shout-out I want to do is to my daughter, because she just became president of her fraternity, our sorority, I'm sorry. And she's studying pre-med, so she's pretty amazing. I don't even know she's mine half the time, but she is pretty amazing. Thank you.
That's wonderful news. Councilman Bennett?
Do you have a report?
No report. Councilman Hewitt?
Yeah, I just wanted to welcome as well all of the newly elected officials. I look forward to working with all of you in the next four years. Excited about our new mayor. Also, wanted to give kudos to anyone who took part in the inauguration on Sunday. It was first-class, and it was a wonderful day for the city of Harahan. I enjoyed it very much with my family, and I thank everyone who participated in putting it on. I just have a few comments to make, just so I can clarify my vote tonight for the legal team. There were some things brought to my attention late yesterday and today, and I'm just not a person who makes quick decisions. I'm a pretty steady person. And when I saw the newspaper article, as well as the statute that says that we shall, the mayor and the city council, give preference to people that live in our municipality to fill these positions, it just concerned me that we appropriately did our due process and that we did recruit, talk to, retain resumes on folks that do live in the city of Harahan. I am all about the spirit of collaboration and teamwork. That's what I'm about. I look forward to working with the mayor and this legal team. Just for me, for me to feel it was right, make a good decision, and have all the information, I could not make that tonight with such short notice of information. So I hope everyone respects my decision, and I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Councilman Johnston?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the voters again for electing me as councilman. If there's anything I could do for you, and need anything, don't hesitate to give me a call, two five nine, five seven six three. Also, I know it's going to be late by the time this actually airs next week, but I just wanted to say happy anniversary to my wife, today, ten years. So that's it. Thank you.
Sounds possible. Councilman Wheeler?
Yes, I just, again, I want to thank the voters, too. Want to thank my husband and my family and all their time and effort to put through the election and help me put me here. And I will do the best for the citizens of Harahan, and like I said from the get-go, I will be the voice of the citizens and listen to any questions and concerns you may have. I look forward to working with the new council and the new mayor. And if you have any questions, you can reach me at five oh four, four five zero, five four eight four. Thank you.
Pay the bills. Bills paid in December of two thousand and fourteen, five hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. No executive session and adjourn.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion. Everybody. I think I have a motion first from Councilman Baudier, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yays.
Five yays. Any opposed?